I'm going to close session tonight to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda. One, labor negotiations with the Lompoc Police Officers Association, and one matter of initiation of litigation. City Council discussed both of those items with staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have a proclamation regarding Small Business Saturday, and will our recipient, please join me at the podium. Whereas the Lompoc Valley celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States that represent 99.7 percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States are responsible for 64.9 percent of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small business employ 47.3 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94 percent of the consumers in the United States value the contributions of small businesses make in their communities, and whereas 96 percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried, and whereas 92 percent of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season, and whereas 59 percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to the holiday sales each year, and whereas the Lompoc Valley supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And we have Ms. Stacy Lothrup from Southside Coffee here to receive it on behalf of the Chamber and all the other small businesses in our community, and I will say it is one of the best days in our community. I spend it with friends going around to the local businesses and getting my Christmas shopping out of the way and trying to keep the revenue in our local economy. Stacy?
Thank you so much, Mayor Osborne and council members and the community. It really is a great opportunity, and I really do want to thank the community for coming out and supporting that. It really is a great way to echo and ditto just what you said, Janelle, about leaving the money here in our, in our community, and it's a great value. There's all kinds of fun things to do at all the different shops that we have, and so it's really fun to just go out and, and support our, our local small businesses, and it's a big payoff for both, both the purchaser and the retailer as well. So, thank you so much on behalf of small businesses here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
November 30th?
Yes. City manager report, please, Mr. Troop.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items tonight. Now that the asbestos removal and other hazardous materials have been removed from the pool, the actual demolition of the pool should commence this week. We've put up three different cameras around there, so one on the north, east, and west side, so it'll be able to be loaded onto the city's website on their main, on our main page, you'll be able to click on it and watch as it's being reduced. And then, staff is going to be working on trying to create a time lapse video, so for posterity's sake, they can watch it later. Also with cameras, the city's PD has been working with our city's broadband division on installing a test phase of different cameras around the city. All indications look like it's going to work well, so we're going to be looking at buying some additional cameras and also placing them around the city per the PD's mapping out on, on where would the best spot be. So, that looks like it's coming to fruition. There's also going to be tomorrow a change of command at Vandenberg Air Force Base. General Whiting will be moving over to Colorado as part of his new Space Command assignment. Our new general will be Major General John E. Shaw. We hope to get in touch with him at some point and see if he'll stop by and actually come down and, and say hello to us. An update is the city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, just to make sure everybody remembers that, the 28th and 29th of November. And also on the 24th is the city's Turkey Trot, so it's a one and three mile fun run. If you go to our city webpage, on the homepage, there's a link to sign up. I think it'd be fun if everyone could go down and do that. The one is, the one, one mile run is more for the younger kids, they've decided to put something in, and then the three mile one is what they've done in the past. And with that, that's all I had.
Thank you. We'll move on to consent calendar. The consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the consent calendar item? Public comment is now open.
Excuse me. Council John Lynn, Lompoc resident and utility commissioner. It has been perhaps two years since Mr. Wilkie said there would be some numbers coming back on the fleet accounts for the various utilities. And to date, I know we've got a lot of things going on, but the perception in the public, and I get asked about it on a fairly regular basis, is that those funds have not been appropriately accounted for and perhaps commingled. And this evening, you're going to vote, and certainly go ahead and vote, to lease equipment that the utilities appear to have already paid for in money that was deducted on an annual basis. I didn't think about it, but I, I did a five-year study on it, and utilities put a great deal of money into fleet replacement, and during that five-year period hadn't gotten any vehicles. You'll recall the crisis we were in with trash trucks where we hadn't had any replacements, and we just had to lease four right away because we didn't have enough trash trucks to run routes. We have a great finance director now, who I'm sure could bring this back if you just asked in a reasonable period of time and settle those arguments. This goes back to 2009. That's how long this has been kicking around. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Any questions, or do we have a motion to accept consent calendar? Councilmember Mosby.
Motion to accept consent calendar.
I'll accept. Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. With no staff presentation announcements or requests, we'll move on to oral communications. These are general oral communications regarding city business. If there is commentary for agenda items, it's preferred to wait until that time, but the floor is now open for oral communications regarding city matters other than what's on the agenda.
Some months ago, I watched with concern as you admonished a citizen at the microphone to instead take his concerns to city department heads or individual council members. Last council meeting, I watched with concern again as you denied a small business person who requested time to speak in response to discussion regarding his business. How do you get information to make decisions on our behalf? City government exists solely to serve citizens' best interests. This microphone is one way citizens and local businesses can advise you what we want, what we need, and what is in our best interest. It is concerning when you don't have questions and you don't want to hear what people have to say. Do you have a script, and where does your script come from? I ran across this article today that may be appropriate. The title is totalitarianism. It's a political system or a form of government that prohibits opposition parties, restricts individual opposition to the state and its claims, and exercises an extremely high degree of control over public and private life. It is regarded as the most extreme and complete form of authoritarianism. We need to fight against these things each day. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it to the new business item. City Council direction, whether to have the city attorney's office lead the city's efforts for processing the Bailey Avenue Sphere of Influence and Annexations applications through the local agency formation commission and how those services will be financed, and we have our city manager, Jim Troop, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, as a request, from council for an agenda item to discuss the Bailey Corridor, Bailey Avenue, Sphere of Influence and Annexation, and the proposed use of the city attorney as the lead person for this process. In my discussions with the city attorney, we came up with an estimated amount, and it really is an estimate because we don't know, no one can really say how long this process will go. It could be short, it could be long. So, we came up with an estimate for the number of hours needed through his firm, and we decided upon 500 hours of city attorney time. This would be his time, staff time in, in his firm, maybe some clerking and other stuff. Currently, the discounted rate for the city attorney for the city, for when they do city services, is $185 per hour if it's paid by the city, or $320, $320 an hour if the expense is to be paid by an outside, like the proponent for this annexation process. Per resolution 6103, parentheses 17, as modified by the council when it was adopted, the project proponents are obligated to pay all LAFCO and city fees associated with the annexation process. The estimated amount using the 500 hours equates to approximately $93,000 through the city's discounted attorney rate, or $160,000 for the non-discounted rate should be paid by the outside proponents. The applicants, at least one pair of the applicants are here for the annexation are here tonight. Should you have any questions for them? But with that, I'll turn it over for you to have a discussion on how you want to proceed.
Any questions for city staff before I let the applicant's representation speak? Councilmember Mosby.
If you just could read again a little slower.
Sorry.
Because there's been a, a public comment that cities broke, they shouldn't be doing this, so just about how the resolution and such, because what I gather is the applicant has the, it goes along with this, it would be charged to him, correct?
Right. So, per, we have a resolution 6103, parentheses 17, so it was adopted in 2017, as it was modified by council, that the, any project proponents, hard word to say, any project proponents are obligated to pay all of the LAFCO and city fees associated with any annexation process. So, that would fall upon whatever person wants to do the annexation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Currently, Mr. Troop, is there money available or allotted for this purpose at this time, and where would it come from? Should it come from the city?
No, we have nothing budgeted for it.
Where would it come from? What fund would it come from if we had the money?
It would come out of the general fund reserve.
It'd be general fund expense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd invite the representation for the annexation application process to speak before we open public comment, if you'd like, regarding this matter.
Mayor, council members, I'm Mark Anadi, in case you don't know. Been here for a while, but we're happy to work with the city on whatever their needs are. I believe we're already paying staff directly as billed. When the bills come in, we wind up turning them and pending that money back. I'm listening to, I'm a little confused about the rate issue about if we're, because as I understand it, this is a city, even though we will pay whatever, whatever rate it is, I think I would like some idea of clarification. For instance, you know, if, if they're, if the billable is because they're working on a, on the application, and we all understand that that application is your application, not ours, we're just simply hoping that we can move it forward, and we're thrilled, by the way, thrilled in either case. It's not going to be an issue with the city attorney coming on, on board and moving this forward. We're happy to have more, more people than less people, but it just kind of, it's just kind of curious how, how they, how they decide which rate it is, but that's the only, the only question I would have on the whole thing. And again, it doesn't matter to us which one it is, it just seems that, that it should be clear that it's still, we don't want to get into, into any kind of situation that, that we are somehow involved in this application other than simply being the landowners. You know, this, this LAFCO application is the city's application, and the city is going through the process, and, and the city is doing all of this. We're not doing it as a private party other than paying for the expense of, of doing that. And that's, I just want to make sure we, we have that as a clear barrier between, between us and this project, make it clear. So, other than that, any questions that you have of me? We've been here for a long time trying to get this done. I think, you know, the city wants to do this, we want to do this, and I don't know, who's against this? No. But anyway, I guess there's somebody that's dragging it along, so maybe we can get to the bottom of that. I think it's good for the city. I mean, we're going to be building homes, we're bringing tax dollars in, like you were saying, people, more people to be here, more revenue, revenue generating, helps your city budgets, helps generate businesses here, helps, you know, stagnation is never the answer, and, you know, and your guys are being forced into a stagnation issue. So, again, any questions, please feel free.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, for clarification for the city manager, thank you, for the city manager, what happens if, if the city spends the money to kind of proceed in this, and then LAFCO, or we don't receive, I guess, the annexation?
It would, we'd still be paying the expense.
Right. So, the city would then incur it, or does the, do we still get that reimbursement from the landowner and/or the proponent?
No, typically, as, as was stated earlier, that we would be billing, just like we do for staff hours, we would continue to bill out.
Okay. So, there's no real chance of the, of the city losing this money? We will receive this reimbursement from the proponent upon, okay, whether the project is approved for annexation or not. And then clarification on what Mark just said, if the application does belong to the city, would the city then proceed on its own with the lesser fee of the $185 per hour and the potential estimated of $92,500?
So, I'm actually going to look to our city attorney, it's his firm, so I'm going to put him on the spot at the moment.
The difference between that, the difference in that $185 and that $320 comes from the contract that the city has with my firm. So, as the project proponent probably knows, or maybe the general public knows, if you go out on the private market for attorney services these days, you're probably paying between $400 an hour to, up to $1,000 an hour, depending on the firm that you hire. The way that we, as, my firm is able to offer the discounted rate of $185 to the city is because we have the non-discounted rate built into our contract that we, that rate is what is charged if there is a private party. It's usually a land use development applicant who's reimbursing the city for their, for the time that the city attorney spends on an application. So, that's the reason that that difference exists.
Okay. So then, in actuality, then, we know that the $185 is not even an option. You're, you're pretty much saying that it would be at the $320 because we know that this is a fee that is going to be reimbursed by the land developer, the landowner.
That is what the contract says, yes.
Okay. And then, the third question, at what point does the money get reimbursed to the city? Because I think there is some concern as to whether the city has money to do, to proceed with this at this point in time or not. I'm not sure why it's relevant if we're going to be reimbursed for it, but at what point in time, I guess that would be relevant to me. At what point in time will the city reserve its, receive its reimbursement on that money?
That would be part of the agreement that we would come up with. Typically, we would send out monthly invoices for the cost.
Okay. So, it's not like we're looking at a two-year or three-year term on this money being paid back. As we spend it, we send out an invoice and we receive reimbursement.
Correct. The other way to do it is to actually do a deposit, and then as we pull down that funding, we will still send out an invoice of what was charged against that. That would actually be the, a better way for the city because we do have limited staff, so asking for a deposit upfront, which we do with other developers, and then we charge against that deposit. If there's anything left at the end, then we reimburse the, the person.
Okay. Understood. I have other questions, but I'll wait.
Councilmember Vega.
Mr. Anadi, if, the contribution to this development, is there limits that you and your client have placed on the city that you guys don't want to exceed, or is it an open-ended agreement with the city? Because the reimbursement with the city or the expenses from the city to be reimbursed, but you may come to a point, or your client may have already, you know, expressed that they don't want to spend over, let's just say, $100,000 or $200,000, or are you saying that you're okay with going through the process? Because there's people that are concerned that the money that's coming out of the city coffers would come out of the general fund, which is non, not there according to Mr. Troop.
I would probably see it along the lines that, you know, we're, we've already, if you're familiar with this already, we've already in it for about a half a million on an old EIR specific plan that was absolutely useless. So, I mean, we've already expended that kind of money on this project already, so that kind of gives you where we're at on it, or what we would do. If, if we get billed on a monthly basis and we're seeing that, and we're being informed, because of course, you know, as we pay, we're assuming we're going to be getting updates and information, updating us to, as to what the process is and where, where we stand in the process and everything like that. Hopefully, we're close enough to the end of the line. I mean, we're, you know, talk, we've already been in this for, what, 18 months now, almost two years on the processing of this. So, we've been paying it. I don't see a problem with, with what the hours that, that are being put in. And to answer your question, you know, if we see a light at the end of the tunnel, we're not going to stop.
Okay. And I guess my other question would be, say for instance, moving forward, we hit a speed bump here in the road, okay, with LAFCO or something else here, and it has to be revisited, then it has to go back, and we end up, I'm just kind of putting a scenario, if we hit a couple of speed bumps which delay the process, which there has to be a, a general plan update in order to facilitate the direction that we're going in, I guess the question would be, it sounds like you're invested, but it would take a little bit more time if we had to do that, sir. So, I'm trying to say, it sounds like you're, it's a green light all the way, and I'm sure, just want the public to hear that and to know that any expenses are going to be reimbursed, and, and it won't be a hole left in the general fund, so to speak.
I mean, we are getting, you know, up to the point where if we feel that it's, it's a project that will not happen, you know, we own the property. We're not farmers, we own the property. This was all part of a, of a secondary development that, you know, and the city has, has stood behind trying to get this thing into the thing. Whatever the process is that requires that, and, and I understand it's potentially what you're talking about with the general plan, we don't, it's already general planned, we've already gone through that process on this piece of property, but, you know, I don't know what hiccups or what, what roadblocks may be presented along the way, but again, as long as we're being given the information and understanding where the process is and, and find, and, and, you know, if, for instance, if we went through this process and we were turned down in LAFCO for a potential issue, right, that we had to come back and figure out some, some other work and have to be, go back to LAFCO, and, you know, obviously we would pay that, that cost. You know, it's a light at the end of the tunnel type thing where, you know, we didn't get it today because of something that we can overcome. We just have to produce the documentation or the information or the reports that, that have, you know, failed LAFCO in the first run and be able to go back to LAFCO. I mean, we're in it to, to get this thing developed. I mean, we've been in it for whatever, 10 years.
Got you. Well, thank you so much. I have a question for the city attorney. City attorney, you mentioned the difference, or they mentioned the difference between a city project pushed forward or a private party pushed forward, and the difference in your fees. Maybe you could clarify and explain, is this a city project moving forward, or is this a private development that's funding this, that's hoping to move forward so that they can move forward with the development project based on one owner, or how is it working when there's multiple owners out in that area?
What makes the difference is not whether it's a city application or a private application to the city. What makes the difference is whether the city is paying the fees, whether the fees are being reimbursed by a private party. So, what the item is tonight is if the council wants the applicant to, to reimburse the city for these costs, then there is the non-discounted rate. If the council wants to pay these costs out of the general fund, then there is the discounted rate. But that's what makes the difference, not whether it's a city's application or the, or the private party's application.
It, it sounds like if it's a city push-forward project, that's between your firm and the contract with the city, this discounted rate or non-discounted rate, the way you describe and designate a city-run project, because, and I, and maybe it's already been in there before in your previous contracts where anybody that reimburses you automatically makes it their project?
That's always been in our contract, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah. Mr. Troop, I'm going to go a little bit off subject here, and there's a couple of questions, and under the background and discussion here, there's a statement, "The county continued to indicate it would be recommending against the Bailey Sphere of Influence annexation." First question would be, who in the, in the county is this that's saying, no, we're not going to go with this? I know there was a statement made a few years ago by Supervisor Adams that said, "It's a natural order. Cities get bigger, counties get smaller." So, who in the county is waving the wand saying, "No"? Following on, LAFCO, if my understanding is correct, has never been a yes/no entity with annexations. They've always been, who provides services, what district does this, they're, they didn't control the growth in the county. I mean, we pay a fair share to be represented in LAFCO as Santa Barbara, but it's obvious that LAFCO is already saying, oh, I don't think it's going to happen.
Right. So, on the first one, we had our last required meeting per LAFCO, so we went down and we, meaning our planning and community development director, myself and others, we went down and met with the county, and they also-
Who is the county that's involved?
Oh, I'm sorry, the planning, let's see, the planning, county planning director was there, a planning manager was there, a, a planning, I don't know what their title is.
So, basically, it was the planning department for the county.
Planning department was there. And we also had at the end of the table, the, the executive director for LAFCO, and another gentleman from LAFCO, and I can't recall what his position was, but the exec, executive director was there. We met for a good hour discussing the situation and why, you know, essentially why it's a good idea, because that was the idea behind this meeting, was to try and come to some agreement. And at the end of the hour, the representatives for the county said, "Yeah, I just don't see this, you know, see the county ever coming to an agreement on the annexation." And at that point, the executive director at the end said, "I don't see LAFCO, you know, there's nothing that's changed, so I don't see LAFCO also agreeing to this." So, it was a little unnerving coming out there, having that type of a discussion. But I think the next question was on LAFCO, was, you know, their, their design to do by the Cortez-Zinox Act is to make sure that all annexations are, you know, one, they're, they're not leapfrogging one another. You know, some cities, in back in the 60s when this was created, cities would jump forward so no one could take that property. They're, to do logical annexations. Some cities do strip annexations, and they've pushed that to aside, saying that, that wasn't a feasible study or a feasible thing to do. So- So, in their background, they really should look to see, can the city maintain this? Can they provide the services? Can they do everything they should be doing as a city? And that's going to be the, the situation that's changed, I believe, over time with Lafco is they've expanded to other areas. I don't know if that answered your question?
It does, and it leads me into another question here. This should be a government-to-government type of an entity. The reason we would bring our attorney in, I feel, is because it's obvious that there's entities outside that always bring in the Environmental Defense Center. There's private citizen groups that fight annexations. I mean, we're looking at a very small annexation, less than four percent of the total available ground out on that end of the valley. We're not able to get less than 200 acres. You go over the hill to northern Lompoke, and these people over there are annexing hundreds of acres, prime ag, all the agri, all these other key words. What is going on? There's, nobody can answer the question, why can't we annex less than 200 acres? We can take the whole Enos Ranch and annex it and do it in a few months, and we've been at this how long, Mr. Anadi?
About two months now, yeah.
No, it's been a lot longer.
Probably for ten years.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, I, I-
Do we need the attorney to fight the Environmental Defense Center? Or is it, what is the mean, why do we, why are we here with this talk of having an attorney fight our battles with planning and stuff?
It, it did come up as a council request. There are some options where, you know, having an attorney there, because we've been to different Lafco meetings and the EDC attorneys show up, and they're all quaffed and, you know, giving out their ideas. You know, I, just my own opinion is maybe go forth with the Lafco as it, or the, the process as it is. If we hit a hiccup and go, okay, this isn't moving forward, then, you know, we can backtrack and, and bring in an attorney. You know, again, this was a council item that came up. I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. We've, we've already put forth a substantial amount of data that says just what you'd said, why are the other cities, we're going to, we're going to be going back and looking at other annexations and, and really putting everything we can in a row that will allow us to present a very strong case as to why this should go forward. I'd rather not get into all the details here, but yeah, it's, it's coming, coming to fruition on that part.
And just to be clear, when your staff report says Lafco, it's just Lafco staff that is saying it won't recommend to the Lafco board. The Lafco board, which is fellow electeds, has not heard the actual application yet because it's not finished, the whole process that will eventually present it to the board.
That is correct. It was just the executive director.
And then upon review, the board is actually a new mix of members because of changes in leadership in other communities and new appointments. So, there is some new blood, so to say, on the actual board that hopefully will respond better to reflecting on what they've been allowed to do in their communities and, and respect what we're asking for. So, I, I think there is some difference there. Councilmember Cordova.
So, for clarification from our city attorney, you mentioned just a little while ago that what we're deciding on here is whether the fees should be placed on the landowner or developer, or whether the, the council intended to have these fees be taken on by our general fund. But I think that clarification has been made. It is the developer, the landowner that would be taking on the cost. We're fighting the battle to try and get that annexation to take place, correct? Is that the only thing that you were hoping, or are we also making the decision tonight on whether we want to proceed with legal representation as opposed to staff representation with Lafco?
You're making both of those decisions tonight, whether-
Okay, okay. And then I wanted to ask, Mark, are you fully comfortable with, I believe there, like the city attorney said, or the city manager said, there was a council representative that felt that maybe we needed to take it a step forward? Are you comfortable with the city, if the council made the decision to have the city attorney represent the conversation from here forward?
Yes, we're more than comfortable. I think that there's a lot of, there's other, you know, there's state issues that are floating around now, and I think that, that the, the normal course is, is having an attorney will help us get this through. You know, we're dealing with a state agency, and like the mayor has just said, is, you know, it's frustrating for you guys when you see your staff not bringing something for you to make decisions on. And I'm sure the Lafco board is in the same position. We need to get to Lafco, the decision-makers, and, and whether or not there's opposition or not opposition. And I think we need to have a well-thought-through presentation for Lafco, and I think having an attorney look at that presentation and be prepared for, will just prepare us better for what we may face when we're facing opposition in front of decision-makers. So, we're more than happy to have the attorney be brought on and have, wind up having a part of our process of paying for them to be involved. We don't want to burden the city with this at all. We've always been very important that we know that budgetary concerns with the city at this point, and we don't want to add a burden to that. We just want to make the city better and, by building homes.
Absolutely, and thank you. And for one more, more point of clarification, so by having the city attorney represent, are we eliminating then staff presence, or would staff presence also be there along with city attorney representation?
My understanding from the council request was to have the city attorney's office take the lead on the application, basically take over what staff is doing right now with Lafco and develop a strategy and move forward. I am certain that we will still, that my office will still need input from staff as we go through this process. But, as for taking over the application, making the decisions, developing a strategy to move forward, that's, that's, would be the city attorney's office, as I understood the request.
Okay, and I'll just, from the council member that made the request, I'll just want clarification that that is the intent, and thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, just a couple of other comments. I mean, we only have one landowner here, Mr. Anadi. There are multiple landowners on there, so this is going to affect far more than, I know you're not here speaking for all of them, but my other question on this is, and the mayor just said it, well, the board's continually evolving and changing. As far as I know, in the last decade, and I'm going to go probably out to 12 years, there has not been a single representative from Lompoke on the Lafco board. It's almost like we've been pushed away, excluded, never nominated. I'd like to say maybe possibly former Mayor DeWes was the last person that sat on Lafco that represented the city, and that's been at least 12 years.
Twenty years. Twenty years was the last time I could find, and that was, you were correct on, on the mayor, DeWes.
Even grimmer than I thought, then. So, we've had no input, no representation, and we're being bossed by a bunch of people that don't even live here, is the synopsis on this.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant representation before I open for public comment? Seeing none, thank you. You may sit down, and we will open the floor for public comment on this matter. You have three minutes. Please come forward to the podium.
My name is Tim Smith. I'm a citizen of Lompoke. Good evening. I agree that this should be led by the city attorney. I think that's a good move. I, it sounds like in the, the sphere of things, this is, would be viewed as non-confrontational and pretty much routine, probably unusual not to appear with, with an attorney in, in hand. This is really critical for Lompoke to get some growth going, and we have to get over this Lafco impasse or apparent impasse that we see. And there's just simply not enough revenue. Many of our, well, at least two of our utilities, the wastewater plant and the water plant, are underutilized. Additional growth is the only way to gain more accounts, and thereby use the, you know, be able to utilize that, that additional capacity. So, the rates right now are abnormally high for every resident that has a utility bill because we don't have enough people spreading the, the cost. That's what we, on top of that, of course, we need revenue for the general fund. So, a lot of things, a lot of things are greatly improved if we get some modest growth. We don't want to see our valley lose its pastoral character. We don't want that, but we do need some growth. We're not big enough. We don't have enough critical mass to do the things that citizens want. So, I do think that this is a very good idea. I think it's really important, and I think, you know, it's going to be, hopefully, if it's successful, it has to be successful. We need to, we need to get the growth, and we will want to have the city attorney, I think this would be money very well-spent on behalf of both the applicants involved as well as the, as well as the long-term future of the city. Very important for a future vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoke. Most of you here now, with the exception, I think, of Councilman Starbuck, were not here to witness the initial, very structured, organized, well-funded opposition to the Bailey corridor. I'll read a little excerpt. "A locally unprecedented union of agriculture and environmental power brokers," that's how they describe themselves, "have made a coordinated effort to stop the growth of Lompoke." The other thing that they have done is implemented a policy of putting substantial amount of affordable housing into Lompoke. I personally think there's a little bit of social engineering going on. That's just my opinion. The big issue, though, is that they have a large legal firm, it's an environmental firm, that has actively litigated the city, and it's probably not very open because, obviously, city can't discuss litigation, but they've put it on the internet in boast of how they made the city reverse decisions that it made regarding the Bailey corridor. I think that you need legal because you are fighting a legal fight. You're going to have an independent legal entity come and challenge anything that you do. I, as well as others, have conducted some research and compiled just some pages for you. I would hope that the city clerk can duplicate that and hand them out. And it talks about the creation of a buffer ordinance, it talks about the coordinated effort of the ag interest and the environmental interest to stop the growth of Lompoke. It talks about the intent to only build homes at people for affordable housing. So, I would say we need it because we need the legal representation. Without it, you're going in with one hand tied behind your back. This is a very powerful political and special interest group that you need a legal firm to fight with. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Scott, I live in Lompoke, eighty-plus years now. Council, I think it's time for Lompoke to rear up on its rear legs and go and help the people that want to help Lompoke. And you're talking about Lafco, I can remember when general plan hearings, that it was asked where Lompoke should expand. And there's six ways you can go. You can go north, south, east, west, or up or down. And Lafco board at that time says, well, we'd prefer you don't cross the river and go over to the farmland, and we don't want you up Magalito Canyon, so it looks like you need to go west or go north. Well, we pretty much went north until we run into the Burton Mesa Preserve up there, and the next available land is the oil fields up on the grade. That's the next available land that you could develop in Lompoke. That doesn't make much sense, does it? Be now, hardly any benefit to the city, we wouldn't have any of the utilities or anything else. So, naturally, you want to go north. And a lot of people say, well, jeez, we shouldn't do that because of this or that. Well, my family and I run tractor under a lot of people's houses. Matter of fact, I used to play volleyball just right over here when this was a park. But, in order to survive, you've got to grow. I went in, if you had a business, and I went in and said, how's your business doing? He said, oh, we're doing about the same as we did five years ago. I'll leave your store and says, well, five years from now, you probably won't be here. So, I think it's time for Lompoke to partner with some of these people and get some projects going instead of leaving it all up to the poor developer to go fight, as Brother Nick said there, the orchestrated group there. So, you need to figure out where we want to go, our general plan, at least the two general plans that I was involved with, both said that we would go to Bailey Avenue, that would become our westernmost point. And there, one of the problems, they said that they needed buffers between ag and that. I believe all the landowners agreed to the 200-foot buffer going to the west, so, you know, it's, the environmentalists have had their, their influence on this, and they're, they're in the plan, so. As a Lompoke resident, as a father, grandfather, great-grandfather, kids living here, let's give them an opportunity to buy a house in Lompoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lynn, Lompoke resident. So, I want to give you an analogy, I love those. We spent $550,000 to clean up a mess in the riverbed. It's on city property, but it's in the county. We pay the county property tax to provide police and fire services for that property, but in the end, the county didn't provide anything, did it? They didn't provide any reimbursement, and the people in Lompoke pay a water bill, who put money into a reserve, saw $550,000 taken out of that reserve to clean up a mess, and it had to be done. There's not a question there, but the county didn't help us. In 1968, all the property owners on the east side of Bailey Avenue put money in, put a sewer line in that actually served the south side of Lompoke and went to the new sewer plant. And they are by right entitled to have sewer service. So, if, for some reasons, at some point, we ever decided to take that right away, we would probably owe them, by my rough guesstimate, based on something that was done quite a few years ago, $15 million. So, I don't know, $1,500 for every sewer connection in Lompoke. As has been said, the county has blocked the Bailey project repeatedly over the years, and I could give you 20 minutes on all the things that were done and the, the things that the council did when I was on, and some of them we were unsuccessful at and some of them we regretted after. So, I think the analogy of fighting with one arm behind your back is actually a pretty good one. We've been proverbially outgunned coming up to this point. What has the result been? The result has been that rents in Lompoke have increased 70%. You know, we're not a rich town, we're working people. Seventy percent is not fair, and the reason it's happened is because we haven't, this restrictiveness caused us not to expand. We also have some opportunities, and the state is now very concerned about new housing, and I believe that we can bring that gun to the table, and I believe our city attorney is the one to get it done. I strongly support doing this. The question was asked, why are they so opposed to it? I call your attention to something that Stacy found a long time ago when I was mayor, which was a long aerial photograph of the valley, taken in 1935 by the Santa Barbara Municipal Water District. Now, why would they care about Lompoke in 1935? There was no Kachuma Lake. Well, I guess it's about the water, and it still is. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment and bring it back to, oh, still coming. All right. If you intend to speak, please go ahead and rise.
Okay, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Mary Ellen Brooks. I'm here just to talk very briefly about this. I have worked in some of the groups that I'm involved with, we have worked along with Lafco about different policies that they have. And it was mentioned before, and I thought quite articulately, you know, what is the purpose of Lafco? And Lafco is a state agency, it is not a county agency. And the purpose of Lafco is to preserve agriculture- And the purpose of Lafco is to preserve agricultural lands. And I think I'm speaking to that point tonight. I feel that some of the policies from Lafco, the land can speak for itself. I don't think there are any agriculturalists here tonight. This came about pretty quickly. I only saw it this morning at about 11 o'clock. So I'm just trying to bring forward the idea that, you know, Lafco policies to prevent urban sprawl, preserve, and in, on a case of Lompoc Valley, in this land, it is prime ag land. If it goes, that's it. We won't have it ever again. And the other idea with Lafco is they're looking at, you know, will the annexations, will the developments that come about, will it pay for themselves? And there have been studies done where development can pay for itself based on fees, usually for about five years. And then that development often becomes a burden on the city, you know, that has established it. And I would just say that, you know, as the city pursues this, that we probably, you have to look at adequate fees for any development that would go onto that land. Otherwise, you know, prime ag land, we just don't want to, we don't want to lose it. I think that's what Lompoc has been about. And I think there's been a great increase in agriculture in the past. I see it every day when I go down to the Mission, you know, in the Lompoc Valley. Agriculture isn't decreasing. I think it's increased. So I would just urge the council to explore the infill development options that were brought up during the general plan process. And I participated in that at least a decade ago. It was a long time ago, but I know during the sessions that we had, many people felt that we have adequate areas in the town for infill development, and that we will try to save the prime ag land in the Lompoc Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Guinaga. I want to speak to this. Actually, I got interviewed by a person that the city hired, a consultant, to talk about the general plan and what my views were as a resident of Lompoc. And this was, God, maybe three, four years ago. One of my main concerns has been that, and I did let the person know, we, Lompoc, emphasize so much on the ag around our community, which I think it's, I mean, ag is good, but at the same time, it's been detrimental to our community. And I gave her an example. I said, you know, it's outside of the city of Lompoc limits. Now, they're bringing foreign laborers to come and work those fields. They're not even utilizing residents of Lompoc. I have clients who have told me, "You know what, Maria? I complain about our wage." And I said, "Why are you bringing people from Mexico or other countries? And why are you paying this, you know, them more, I mean, paying them and for their housing and meals? Why don't you just raise my wage? And we'll be happy. And I can get you more workers to come work." I said, "But now, because you don't want to pay us more, now you're bringing this foreign labor." So now there's, so that foreign labor is also displacing residents of Lompoc their jobs. So that's why when it came to saving ag land, you know, the Bailey Corridor, I told, my comment was, "We need to do what's best for Lompoc." And, and I don't think Lompoc realizes that, if you look historically, that we've been stopped by so many outsiders to grow. And when I mean outsiders, I'm talking about entities from out of the city of Lompoc, out of Santa Barbara, that come in and tell us how they want us to be. I think it's time the Lompoc says, "This is what we want, and we need to take care of ourselves, and we need to take care of the people who reside in this community." And it saddens me to see that even the ag, the workers, are being replaced now by foreign workers. And that's kind of scary, because what's next, what's the next industry that's going to come in and be replaced by foreign workers? So, and it's sad that people don't look at that, at agriculture workers as a valuable, valuable asset, because those people work really hard. I know my parents work ag, and they work super hard, and they're being told, "You know what? We're replacing you by someone that can be cheaper." So it doesn't help our economy, and it doesn't help the city, the residents of Lompoc. Thank you.
Seeing no one rise, we will now close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Just for the community's understanding, I went and refreshed my memory, having sat through several Lafco meetings over the past year. The delay that the applicant is feeling is Lafco itself took nearly nine months to reevaluate its own charter and what its purpose was. And their mission, first and foremost, as they stayed on their webpage and they reassessed and reaffirmed by not accepting staff recommendations to become more stringent, that their mission is committed to serving the residents of Santa Barbara County and the state of California by discouraging urban sprawl and encouraging the orderly formation and development of local agencies based on local conditions and circumstances. And I believe that the recommendation to engage a city attorney into the process is to become a stronger advocate for us as the local agency to reflect on the local conditions and circumstances that we have here, that those at the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission, I mean Committee, not Committee or Commission, the actual department, are not paying attention to. In discussions with those departments and those employees, they live in South County. They advocate more of a South County mentality. So having a stronger advocate for our applicant and for ourselves to reflect on the local conditions and circumstances so that the Lafco board hears what those are and can help move this forward is a key piece of this. So I, I am grateful that one of the applicant's representation is agreeable to carrying the costs, because we cannot carry those, and that you're agreeable to us bringing on a stronger legal representation. At the same time, as we move forward with this and get support for it and make this decision to do this, I think it's really important that we also not come at it combatively. This is about providing a solution that both makes us successful and Lafco and the county successful, because our success improves the county's success. And if we can make that argument, I think you'll see the Lafco board support our request. And that, that's what my request would be, is that it be forceful, well-thought-out, but not us against them, because I don't see it as that. I think it's basically making sure that the Lafco board is getting the information it's not going to receive from either staff or Lafco staff. Councilmember Mosby.
Just to the council members, about the preservation of ag land currently, well, in the recent past, the federal government was paying for over $38 million acres not to be farmed, not to be farmed. So this, this, comets like broccoli and cauliflower and endangered species is ridiculous. Housing is in a shortage in town. I think we're, maybe one or two homes built last year?
We actually had a deficit just a couple of years ago. We had one built, two torn down.
Yeah, amazing. You know, so the protectionism of ag land, and again, in Lafco's decision-making, there's also an environmental justice component, as well as a social equity component, which only seems to be observed if you're in South County. In South County, the prime avocado orchards have already been built over. As far as sprawl, they have this thing called the Santa Barbara Airport that was somehow annexed into the city of Santa Barbara. Should be more likely the Galita Airport. So there's always been two sides of this coin, and watching this movement for the last 20 or 30 years, it's become complex. Without going a little deeper than what we're trying to do on the genderized item, I think it's important to clarify some of the statements that came out there. And Lafco is to not preserve ag land. Maybe the city manager can answer that.
Yeah, I just brought it up because that is one of my sticking points. So this is off the Cortez-Zinnox Act, and this is where it actually, Lafco, is created. And I'll just read the first part, sort of like the tenant, what is, what is the purpose of it? And it just says, "The legislature finds and declares it is the policy of the state to encourage orderly growth and development, which are essential to the social, fiscal, and economic well-being of the state. The legislature recognizes that the logical formation and determination of local agency boundaries is an important factor in promoting orderly development and," and this is the, to me, key words, "in balancing that development with sometimes competing interests of discouraging urban sprawl, preserving open space and prime ag lands, and efficiently extending government services." And then it goes on. So it's, it's, first part was orderly growth.
Right. And comes into the cost sharing, et cetera. So again, when we have a community like ourselves, it's a minority-majority community that's economically challenged and deprived, and there seems to be two separate sets of rules. And South County has very well survived, thrived, and is going gang-bucksters. And I keep thinking back to the movie Independence Day, and when the alien comes over and wraps around the guy's neck, and they're asking, "Well, what do you want us to do?" And he says, "Die." And that's what I keep seeing South County wants us to do. And is it combative? Yes, I've sat here and watched these meetings over and over and over and over and over again, and watching the combativeness on this level. The, if, could the finance director tell us, I mean, what are we looking at, potential revenue coming in with this annually? I mean, we know we need to expand our general fund, and maybe you could help me see what kind of numbers we might get if we're able to finally grow and retain some of these valuable people.
How many houses are we talking?
I mean, let's just, let me just give you a thousand numbers, just for an easy number to roll off with. That's probably on the higher side. Let's say we get a thousand houses out here of the higher, higher-end category, just for ballparking.
If you're talking a thousand houses, if you figure how much a person has to make to buy that house, and if we're talking 500,000, somewhere in that range, you're probably talking the revenue generator of sales tax in the about 300,000 to 400,000 range. Property tax, probably 600, so you're probably talking a million. So give you an idea of what that kind of growth would generate.
And so a million dollars, which, what are we, what are we getting right now, a year in our natural growth component to our general fund? About 600,000 a year? 500?
For all our taxes, yeah. T R T, sales tax, and...
So we're looking at, one of the biggest parts where we are struggling in our general fund is because we're missing this major component. And this is one of the reasons why I brought this up, to move forward, to help, not to take part, and I would take away from city planning staff, but to assist, because it is such a desperate component. The last 15 years, I think we grew less than three-tenths of 1%, where Santa Maria was getting close to a 3% annual growth rate. And we stand back, and we try to get the city manager and the finance director to balance a budget, and we don't have the revenues. And we wonder why we're behind the other communities. It's because we're missing out on this. And this is probably one of the most important things and accomplishment that we haven't been doing, and we need to do. And we need to use every avenue and angle that we can to move forward with this. And I think the applicant, which the others were here, but we have a statement from Park, we already have an agreement that says they'll, they'll pay all anyways, correct?
We have a resolution that the council adopted in 2017 that says the applicants will cover the costs.
Okay. So I think we're already, we already have this. I mean, we know, we know we need to go to the next level. And I believe that this is a solution. It's not a problem here. And we'll get there, again, in the guise of social equity and environmental justice, to truly do what minority-majority communities should be allowed to do, not deprived, unlike, unlike the South County areas that are blessed with annexations and growth.
Councilmember Cordova.
I completely respect the preservation of ag land throughout our county, as well as our surrounding city. However, I strongly believe that if a developer or landowner wants to develop their land, they should be not, they should not be told that they can't. I also believe that obstructing a direct means of revenue into our general fund is, is, is beyond me. I don't even understand why we, as a city, would do that when we have the capability to be able to grow the city in that manner. And we all know that there is a direct housing crisis in the city of Lompoc. And I do agree with the comment that, you know, maybe we need to look at our street impact fees or our developer fees. I know that we've suspended some in the past in hopes of motivating developers to come to the table. I don't know how much motivation that's really had. I'm not saying, "Let's go and, and let's increase these fees and make it not viable for developers to do it." We know that construction cost right now is extremely high, so any help to get this project off the ground is going to be important. However, I do think that we also need to look to the future of Lompoc and to obstruct something that would be a direct impact to our general fund, which would then generate money for our public safety, including our fire. That is beyond me. So I, I would agree.
Councilmember Vega.
A question for city finance, maybe city manager, maybe planning. Should the Lafco annexation move forward? A question was asked, can the city afford to build it out? Maybe someone could give me just a brief kind of synopsis for the public and for the people that have asked me this question, on how we move forward and how the costs are going to be distributed. I know about street impact fees and everything, but for the public to know, just the annexation, annexation to move forward with landowners that want to develop, obviously, the developer's paying for all these, or the landowners. How about any other street fees, lights, and all that? Maybe you guys could just give me a little brief synopsis on how that goes?
That is, I mean, that is down the road a little bit, but for instance, like with our newest development, we have 44 homes going in at Summit View. We did create a CFD, that's a Community Facilities District. So every household pays a certain percentage in, so that in about 10 years, there's enough funding collected to repave the streets in that area. So it sort of becomes a self-sufficient to that area. It'll, it'll pay for the streets in that area versus having to pull it from the general fund somewhere else. So that could be, these are just possibilities. That could be something we can look at. Typically, the developer will go in and cover a substantial amount of those costs. I don't even know if there's a, I'm looking for Brian, if he's around behind me. If there's any kind of a, pre-approved plan, I mean, not a plan, but a conceptual plan of, of its homes, its businesses. So it's, it's a tough one to say, but from the city's perspective, it's really police, fire, maintenance of whatever, the pipes and things that go on once they're in the ground. I don't see, as Councilmember Mosby said, we'll be getting some more general fund revenue coming in, so we'll have those abilities to cover that. There'll be the water, sewer, electric, trash, all the other utilities. We'll be getting rates from that. As the one speaker, Mr. Smith, said, you know, "The more we can spread the fixed costs around, the better it is for everybody, because it'll either keep the rates where they are or eventually it could possibly reduce the rates if we can spread those costs around." So.
Thank you. You know, in development, I heard the comment mentioned by one of the speakers that said, "Hey, after five years, the development turns into a burden on a city." Is that how you see it, Mr. Trup, that any new development comes in is a burden after five years?
No. You know, I think what they're saying is there's costs involved, because as infrastructure ages, there's costs there. But if we can structure it where those costs, just like I said with the CFD and Summit View, then those are, you know, the city's made whole. So there are ways around that. It's, what I would like to see is a mixture of business and homes, because you get different types of tax revenue coming in, rather than just property tax. You can get more sales tax. The businesses that are in there, as they're buying goods, they're buying more. A typical home, a person, the average we use is about 20% of a person's income is disposable. So let's say they make, for ease, they make $100,000 a year, $20,000 is disposable. The tax on that would be the 1% that everyone does. So it's $2,000 a year the city would get. But businesses spend much more than the person does because they're in business. So that's why it's good to have a mixture of businesses, because they're buying much more and will be able to recoup some of those taxes.
Thank you. I believe that's what the development is intended out there on Bailey Corridor out there, and I think it will add to the base, as Councilwoman Cordova mentioned. It will help shore up our services to public safety. We look at anything that's happening now, but actually, we're looking for revenue so that we can increase those, so that we can have the coverage that would be motivational to people coming. to people coming in, investing in our community. So thank you.
I'm going to take privilege of making a comment before yielding the mic. What I'm hearing is that we all agree this needs to move forward. I've heard the applicant that is present, the representation, say they are willing to bear the costs. And I've heard predominantly from our community that they think we need to go in and be prepared for the fight that will be brought to us. So I would make a motion to recommend that the city attorney's office take the lead on completing this annexation process, with the project proponents pay any and all of city costs, and accept the recommendation.
I second.
Councilmember Cordova, thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Sorry.
All right. So we have it moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns? Let's vote. And that motion is 5-0. All right. Any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. We'll again open the floor for oral communications for two minutes regarding city matters.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'd just like to reiterate something that a previous speaker said, and that is, I've come here several times and said that it is time to update fees, as Councilwoman Cordova stated. We have a $7,000 or $8,000 park fee, yet fire and police get several hundred dollars. I think that needs to be reversed, given the necessities of public safety. I think we have an overabundance of available parks. We have money that we can't use for those parks, because it can only be used on new facilities. I, I would highly suggest that you look at those. And I personally, I mean, I, I know we need activities for the youth, but I don't know that the, the simple park fee accomplishes that. But I would like to see that those fees reflect more heavily on the fact that we have some needs for facilities for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will Skyler, Lompoc Council. I'd like to give the city of Lompoc two gold stars. The other day, my street light didn't work very well, and I called in, and glad to please to report that they came and found the problem with it and fixed it, and it is working, it was working tonight when I left. And the other, I smiled the other day as I passed the street sweeper back sweeping the streets again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back for council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
I represented the city of Lompoc at the SBCAP subregional meeting. Comment about the AB 1600 and the impact fees, that's coming back. It's already on the, on the books at some time. The, we did get a memo on the cannabis items, but the question was, what are we doing with the deposits, and how are we going to give them back or not give them back? So it wasn't just getting the report, it was, the motion was made to come back this past April, to discuss how we were going to refund it. Because if you read the, the resolution, it doesn't directly talk about collection of the deposit, but it doesn't mentioning when or how we're going to refund the deposit. There's a, there's a component that was left out of the resolution. So that, that was kind of the main thing, because it looks to me like nothing's been refunded yet. So we're still holding funds, so...
So that council request's already been made, so we don't need to vote again, but we'll bring that back.
We can update that.
Yeah. Just commenting on that. The other, other item that we had in our mailbox was the ad hoc committee's reporting on the tax resolution. And I have to say, the way it's written, there are false statements that are in that resolution that I can't support as written. One mainly is that we're operating at a $4.9 million deficit, which is not correct. We are not operating in this $4.9 million deficit. And I think it'd been better if it was a little more truthful than somebody trying to make it successful and skimming across the top of it. I do support the tax measure, but the statement in there, I think, should have done a whole lot better job.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
I have a couple of requests. Previously, I had a council request that asked for a review of the positions of city clerk, treasurer, and we were going to have a discussion on financial service manager. And I'd like to make an amendment to my request. It hasn't come back yet. We were pretty deep in zoning update, and I understand. But I'd like to add a couple of more positions that we have for discussion with possible action when it comes back here. I'd like to add the police and the fire chief to that list. And that's an amendment to my previous council request to allow them to be appointed positions by council. That's one. So do we want to take them one at a time, or how do we do this?
I'd give you a second on that.
I don't believe I hear a third, so that amendment fails.
Okay. I'll go to the second one. Personnel review for the city manager. Like to reference this to city attorney. I think it's time. I think it's, there's some things and issues that we probably just need to discuss. So if we could maybe schedule that, if it's not already scheduled. Not sure what the parameters and guidelines are within every year, but I'd like to request that, that we...
There is a year-end evaluation scheduled under the city manager's contract, but if you'd like to have one sooner, the council can do that, too. But we're getting up to the end of the year already.
We have till the end of the year?
No, no. There's a yearly performance evaluation required by the city manager's contract. I believe that occurs in January, January.
And is this automatic, or is this something that has to be...
It's automatic. So it's going to happen in January, but if the council would like one sooner, that is an option, too.
Okay. I'll let it go if it's going to be the first of the year or something like that. I just wanted to make sure that we're cognizant, so we can have that discussion moving forward. I have one comment here. City of Lompoc, and I understand the, the rhetoric of short staff and whatever, but this is, this is business as usual still with staffing and, and the way the budget is laid out. I have people that have called me, and bus stops are sacred, is what I'm going to say. Bus stops in the city of Lompoc, where people are being allowed to build out on, I don't believe is the right of the people that are building out and, and laying there. And it's a detriment to the city, because if we've hired a contractor to run the buses, and city's counting on revenue, then we're shooting ourselves in both feet by not allowing people to feel comfortable within those bus stop situations. Maybe we could come back, have a discussion on that. I know what the rhetoric is. It's always that we don't have enough people, we don't have code enforcement, but I'd like to zip right past that and make a council request that we actually have a review on why our main streets, why they're being allowed to, to populate and actually camp out and live in there. You know, it's not a right of anybody just to be able to build out and anything they can build out on. You know it, it hurts your eyes, it hurts my eyes. It's not right. It's not right. We're over here counting on the revenue, we're talking about revenue generation within the city, but it's, we sit back and we allow that to happen, and we don't do anything about it. So my council requested we come back and have a discussion on city bus stops.
Were you looking for a discussion, or could the manager bring back with a full report?
Bring back a report, but we need to have a little bit of proactiveness in that area. I don't think they're all being populated, but there are some sore spots, and maybe someone could come back and enlighten us on where the laws are against us and for us, and why we can't take care of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I need a second and a third.
Need a second and a third? Okay. Second, third, on Mr. Vegas?
I'll give a second.
I'd give a third, but I think if the manager was willing to do it, but...
Councilmember Cordova.
I was able to attend the planning commission meeting this past week, as well as the Parks and Rec meeting. I unfortunately didn't make it to the utilities commission meeting, but I hope to make it next month. Thank you.
Well, you're led off the hook, because it was my cycle for the utility commission, so next month starts yours, so... I attended the Toys for Tots kickoff, so don't forget that is going on all month, and there are several events. It was posted in our local paper, and they do have it on their website, several events going on in town regarding that. I attended the Community Action Commission's Board Meeting as the city's representative. I participated in the Library of Science Friday, because we had our local NASA scientist, who's a friend of mine there, so I got to see the library in action in an after-school program. Along with several of our council members, I attended the Veterans Day ceremony, where Colonel Mastelier did speak from the Vandenberg Air Force Base, and I really appreciate him being a part of our community. I then that afternoon went to the Lompoc Museum for its Veterans Day celebration. They were closing out their two-year celebration of World War I remembrance, and all the improvements they've made, and the exhibits they have going, and accepted a donation from a local individual who doesn't live here anymore. So it was really a great day with a video film that everyone should watch about World War I. And then I also attended the chamber mixer at our library, given the physical building itself is having its 50th anniversary. And the best story I heard that night was the day it was breaking ground and being built, there were individuals that felt it was too far outside of town, and it was never going to be a good thing being that far outside of town. And here we are, surrounding it completely by town. I did attend the utility commission, and then I did represent the city at a statewide conference this past weekend, where my hotel was paid for with the state of cannabis. And the two days really was interesting, and I'll bring back a report of some of the findings that came out of that. But predominantly, it's, not only did we have free market, but we need to come back and look at enforcement and oversight of the industry. The legal licensed industry wants us to do oversight, wants us to do enforcement, and we need to do a better job locally by empowering and providing enough funds to our police and fire department and code enforcement to provide that oversight, because the legal and licensed industry is fighting the unlicensed on their own, and that is not helpful. So we need to do a better job, especially given we did free market, so... And then the last thing is, I attended the Hill Advisory Meeting as a representative for the city with the Lompoc Valley Community Health Organization, who is celebrating its 20th year this year, and we really appreciate all they're doing to improve both our physical and mental health in our community. That being said, we will see you all for the next Lompoc City Council Meeting, Act for Thanksgiving, at 6:30 PM on December 3, 2019, and we adjourn.